Have a change of status received from Jennifer Swisher, Emergency Communications Director, for the following: to receive a certification stipend of $500 for completing the 911 Center Supervisor Training Course effective January 16, 2025. Allison Litten, Kimberly Barrett, and Melissa Holstfeld. New hire recommendation received from the Honorable Anthony Petrucci, County Clerk for Leah Rowley as a Deputy Clerk in the Voters Registration effective March 17, 2025, with an annual salary of $35,000. Change of status received from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections for Jessica Lundblad, Case Manager, for to increase a $500 increase for obtaining a training certification retroactive to October 1, 2024, with a salary change from $50,676 to $51,176. And Taylor Parker to receive a $500 increase for obtaining a training certification retroactive October 1, 2024, with a salary change of $43,135 to $43,635. Change of status received from Mike Lang, Chief Court Marshal for Adam Foreman, Deputy Court Marshal for a step increase for five years of service with a compensatory change from $40,678 to $43,118. Letter of resignation received from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections for Gia Will, Peer Recovery Coach effective February 27, 2025. We have a letter of retirement received from Honorable Anthony Petrucci, County Clerk for Penny Dorsey, Voters Registration effective March 31, 2025. February 27 minutes, everyone was present. And our own Doug Smith has presented bond reductions, bond release, Red Hill Phase 10, that's final plat, BCP File 2112-463 tied to BCP 2010-272 and number 2009-237, and that's bond number CIC 1912085. Our Engineering Department makes that recommendation. Bond release, Red Hill Phase 11, final plat, BCP File 2305-162 tied to BCP number 2301-033, number 2201-014, and number 2209-237, bond number C1C 1923410. Bond reduction, warranty start for stone mill lots 1 through 25, BCP File 2107-241 tied to BCP File 2107-242, and number 2107-21210, number 2008-114, and 029-06, and that's LOC number 4832911-53. Engineering makes that recommendation. Anybody have any questions for Doug on any of those? Thank you, Doug. We do have a letter, request a letter of endorsement. I'm sorry, it's not a letter of endorsement.
Letter request.
Letter request. From Belavista, Event Center, for beer, wine, for beer and liquor for upcoming weddings scheduled for September 24.
Just a little confused about that.
I don't think it's September.
It's a May property.
It is not.
But you still have to do a request for a letter.
We do these, yeah.
Just a simple letter that we accept no.
It's May the 24th, I don't think it's in September.
I'm sorry, did I say September? Anyway, May 24, 2025. Well, let me just read it at the bottom. "While the Commission cannot endorse the event and accepts no liability for the event or associated activity, County Commission has no objection to the event being held and distribution of beer/wine being served at this event." And we've done those at least five years that I've been here, so.
Yeah, we used to do them for Rotary events, we've done them for multiple things. It's a formality you have to go through to get the approval from the sale.
It's part of the one-day licensure?
Yeah.
Okay, I need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Sue.
Second.
The proper move and second, any further discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Next up is Larry Hess, our Sessor. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
How you doing?
Good morning. Just got a couple for real streets, bond releases. And first three, we had hospital levers added into this parent partial that should have been, you know, we had to take it back out, so it was a good credit to him. He gives another enough money, but the last one down there is for all the tax. Total for all four rates, $2,448.77.
Very good.
We approve.
Okay. The second.
Second.
The proper move and second, any further discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Boyd.
Well.
Boarding meeting reports.
I've had a lot of meetings. Been busy couple weeks. Last week with the budget, we didn't really do our meeting reports, so I had a couple leading into that. The CBB meeting on February 25th, we went over a lot of things that had been going on over the last year, leading into this year. Requests from Main Street for the Ambassador Program. This was a program that started last year as a, like, sort of a stepping stone for the city and for Main Street to have ambassadors downtown doing different events and things. And was, the purpose of it was to help the city get a Safer Streets grant and move forward with that, but the new administration, those grants are no longer available. And after looking at that, the CBB, I think, has decided not to move forward with funding that program. They have enough money to do about three more months of that program left over from last year because of the slow start with it. But they thought that without the look into the future, that there was money coming from a different source, that they didn't feel they should continue to use their money to carry that program. Hotel occupancy, Airbnb occupancies, everything is down a little bit. Not as down as much as the rest of the state, but we have a lot of construction and travel through 81, so our numbers stay a little higher, but we're still down a good bit there. So the money from the hotel motel is not where it has been in the last couple of years. They are working to try to get this grant, or not grant, this app put together. They started, I don't know if you remember, last year I told you there was an app about where to go and view Christmas lights and Halloween decorations and things. You could download this app, and if you're one of those people that want to travel around and see the decorations and things, people who live here in the public could enter their addresses and that they have a display, and people could ride around and see that. They're taking that to another level with that app, where they're going to expand that, and it'll be an interactive app where it's called Wander with Maps. So if you're coming into town and you say you like breweries or distilleries, and you like pottery, and you like these type of restaurants, you type all these things in, and it'll map out a whole weekend of things you can do. Suggest you go here, here, and here, what times they're open, where they're located, and kind of put you on a trail through Berkeley County. So I think that's a good sounding thing. They're working on that. And then there were some grant applications requested. Couple, one was tabled, Farmers Market Grant for 2,500 was approved, and that's kind of what's going on at the CBB. Roundhouse had a meeting on February 20th, mostly talking about upcoming season with the Farmers Market. The new Night Market, which is a spinoff of the Farmers Market, that'll be once a month in the evenings, hoping to catch people getting off the train, and sort of like what Main Street was doing or doing with the Fridays at 5, but at the Roundhouse with the market, and have some distilleries down there and wineries and breweries doing tastings and some different things, just more of an adult market, not a family market, but something different to get some traffic through there. We've also moved forward at the Roundhouse, we have that, we're working with Region 9 with the earmarked money from Capito and Mansion, we have that 750,000. We put out an RFQ to find architects to give us their qualifications for full drawing on the whole project down there. That would be the foot pedestrian bridge, the regular bridge, finishing the downstairs of the Bridge and Machine Shop, the outdoor market area, parking, and stormwater management, all into a master plan there. So anytime as the funds come, we have exact drawings and know exactly what we need and can go out to bid. So that's what we decided to use that money that's come from the state with. And then, as you know, we took two weekend trips there. We went to the West Virginia County Commission Association Weekend, had several meetings there. I thought that was a productive weekend for us. Of course, we all were down there. And then this last weekend with the West Virginia Association Counties. Again, good networking, good meetings. We met with some senators, and Steve met with Department of Highways. That was, I thought that went very well. I'll let Steve elaborate on that, that was his baby. That's my report.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Hardy.
Oh, yeah, my report is, I missed a Waterboard meeting due to our time in Charleston and working on building relationships and working on legislation in Charleston. But I did make it to Planning Commission meeting this past Monday night. It was a standard Planning Commission meeting, was quite a few of public hearings, I think there was six or seven public hearings with little discussion. There was not a lot of response from the public, but all the projects were represented by engineering firms, pretty standard meeting. I will say that I think that our time that we spent in Charleston, meeting with other commissioners, our local legislators, and legislators from all over the state, is a very valuable time spent. I was able to work a little bit on two things that are pretty near and dear to me. Working pretty hard to try to get the state funding restored to Bethany House. Bethany House had lost its state funding that they had received for 32 years to a different organization through a different grant process. The grant process had changed, and that grant was subsequently given to another organization. So we're working diligently to try to restore their funding from the state level. And also, a piece of legislation, House Bill 2707, a piece of legislation that would represent the Eastern Panhandle, being able to use outside regions for our mental health evaluations. Right now, Berkeley County spends about $300,000 a year transporting mental hygiene patients to state hospitals, which I think is not a good spend for taxpayer dollars, but unfortunately, that's state code, and this commission has no oversight of that. So we are working on a piece of legislation in the House, and I think the Senate would be open to it, to allow for the county, or for the state, to be able to find contractors, maybe in Virginia or Maryland, that they could work with to do these mental hygiene evaluations. So that's my report, and we'll stay on top of the legislation that's working in this year's legislature, and hopefully we'll, some of that will make it to the finish line.
Very good. Mr. Woodaker.
I did not have any meetings, but I also attended the County Commission Association Meeting in Charleston, actually, it was, it was a couple of things that were going on for everybody down there. I ended up having a meet and greet with a local delegation, a couple of them in the airport. Authority members were there, a couple of them were there, and they're working on revenue for some sourcing that they want to do out there for expansion. So that being said, I'll waste my time.
Well, I'm not going to let him go yet, because we have a bid opening at 9:50. And I'm going to ask, come back to you, sir. But we do have time for the swearing in of our honorary County Commissioners. So Commissioner Hardy, if you would do the honors of swearing.
What he's saying is, he knew I was going to talk a lot. I guess.
So we're going to swear in Noah Harding here this morning. Now, you want to come step over here, and we're going to move this over a little further. I think I haven't been doing the best job of getting people on the livestream. So Noah, if you would raise your right hand and repeat that for me. I, Noah Harding.
I, Noah Harding.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
The Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
That I will work hard to fulfill my responsibilities.
That I'll work hard to fulfill my responsibilities.
Of the Honorary Commissioner.
Of the Honorary Commissioner.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right. Thank you very much. Let me give you this here. Thank you for being here today. And here's a, yeah, here's a citation for your Honorary Commissioner. And feel free to have a seat there, and if you have any kind of questions, concerns, anything that you want to give any of your advice to the commission, feel free to pipe in anytime you want to.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Hey, we're right on the money. Gary, if you would give us a review of the RFP for, I'm sorry, RFP for mobile data computers.
Yes, sir. You do have the certification and publication from the Journal. It was distributed to known vendors, advertised on your website. This bid is for mobile data computers for use in your Sheriff's Department's vehicles. You have grant monies that funded this. You actually had written a grant for a drone to the tune of about $50,000, and the market to purchase drones and things, that money was disqualified. They wouldn't let them buy it because it weren't on the blue list and all of this stuff. So you had already had budget in your IT department to buy some mobile data computers this year. So this is, this is kind of a twist where we're going to pay for the drone with your IT monies, and then have the grant pay for these computers. So you still got one of them free, if you will. So, and you only have one response, which I find very concerning. We typically get 10 to 15 for computer equipment, so I'm anxious to see how they're priced.
Right out the gate, they have a little problem with following the instructions.
Yep. Got that price sheet right on top. Got that price sheet right on top.
There's clear concise instructions, it says, right on the front.
The first and only bid is from Unistar Sparco Computer Incorporated. Their bid is $23,621.
How many computers is this?
Twenty-five.
They're showing 23 on here.
Twenty-three, okay, I'm sorry.
About $1,000.
We'll get those to the folks and let them review it.
Okay. And next up, Gary, is the RFP for Interior Reflective Security Film.
Yes, sir. Yet another grant that's 100% funded. This one, you do have certification and publication. It was distributed to known vendors and placed on the website. And I think you may have four responses to this one. It's for the Judicial Center.
Those computers, Gary, are they laptops or?
They're laptops. They have tablets now. They want, with the new changes in the software where they can actually do some computer aided dispatching work in the car, they wanted to switch to laptops so they can type, touch it on the screen. So they started with laptops, went to tablets, and went back to laptops.
That was for the sheriff's department?
Yeah.
That's what those machines are doing.
Like a business card.
Yeah, a business card.
A thousand dollars machine.
Carolina Premier Window Films, $10,230 with an optional attachment system of $5,770. And they are out of Fort Hill, South Carolina.
The grant you have is for 15.
The second one is Coolview MKELLC out of Fox Point. The next one is Jack of All Tents LLC, Zanesville, Ohio, for $12,643.56. Number four is Unique Vision Solar Tent, Kirkwood, Missouri, and that's $13,979.
Gary, this is just for like a sun shade type? It's not ballistic or anything like that? Just?
Okay. We're going to pick back up with Commissioner Catlett's board and meeting report.
Why do you guys need a solar tent?
Not a solar tent. Solar film that goes on windows.
It's not energy. It doesn't produce any energy. It's just like you get your car windows tinted so you're not sitting in a fishbowl. So yeah, so this is for the Judicial Center for where the sun comes in and it has a big glass front on it. So I have a feeling that those windows are maybe tinted now and this is a replacement.
No, I think it's just a different set of windows. The whole building's not tinted.
Okay. So this is for a set of windows that is not tinted right now. So yeah, so when the sun comes in, keeps a, probably helps keep the energy costs down and also makes it, keep all that sun from coming in the building.
Okay. All right, Noah? Okay, Noah?
Mm-hmm.
All right, good deal. All right, Commissioner Catlett?
Yeah, making up for a couple of weeks here. Our last, a week ago, Wednesday, was our Senior Services Board Meeting. And I did want to say that we have purchased a new bus, well, a used bus, but a new one for the center. $69,000 with less than 9,000 miles on it. Tremendous buy. They went out to Ohio to pick it up and out of the $69,000, we had an LEDA grant from Craig Blair for $50,000 and we got another tent from Charlie Trump. So, and plus they had insurance on the old bus that they were replacing. So actually ended up netting money off of the deal, which worked out really well. And it's a fabulous bus that we looked at just this week. Also, last Thursday, we had our ambulance authority meeting and Brian Costello, the Director of the Ambulance Authority, is retiring. And so he gave his letter of resignation effective October 1st of this year. On April the 1st of this year, Brandon Truman will be taking over as Director and then Brian will be kept on for those six, last six months of his time to assist and just help with the transition. So we wish Brian, we appreciate the past 11 years that he's been here and wish him the best of luck, but he'll still be around, of course, for several more months yet. As we talked about our trips to Charleston, I did just want to mention our one meeting HD and I attended on Tuesday of this week. We met with the new Commissioner of Highways, Commissioner Rumble, and six other staff members were in that meeting. We spent an hour with them. We discussed our just concerns with the road situation here in Berkeley County. I felt very good about the attention we got, about the interest that they showed. We talked about Route 9 West, of course, which is the Tier 1 project for our MPO, the Hedgesfield to Martinsburg traffic situation and how to correct that, hopefully. We talked about Exit 12 and Exit 8 on 81, how we need to connect the two together and maybe at some point get Novak Lane bypassed past the airport down to the Route 9 bypass to Ransay. We talked about 901 and how busy it's become and the curb situations there that need corrected. We spent time to get it on the mapping and all and it got very intense with it, looked at it really close and was very attentive. We talked about the Route 11 North stoplight need for the CMC entrance and exit. We did say that we would be a partner with that if they could make that happen and we felt it was necessary for that to happen. So very, very good meeting.
Yeah, they said you move to the top of the list if you partner with things. So anything within our tip districts that we're able to help with, should it come about, they say we go from, we'll think about it, to let's get on it. That's pretty much what they said.
Charleston always gets very excited when you start talking about your own skin in the game. If you can come up with a little bit of your own money, you guys are exactly right, they get excited.
The Commissioner did say that, you know, the governor's interest in road projects is going to be what drives the economy in the state. Our response to that was Berkeley County drives the economy in the state of West Virginia. We're the lead and we need the attention. And building roads in other parts of the state where there's no growth compared to what the needs are here is certainly something that needs to be pushed and recognized. So I thought it went well.
Well, if the infrastructure continues to grow at the rate it's grown and we don't start doing some road projects, there won't be nowhere to put the road projects. So that's part of it, too. You got to get ahead of some spots. You know, we made that clear today.
They are going to pursue, though. It's in plans and the money's been budgeted for two roundabouts on Route 9 West. One at Ridge Road at Hedgesville High School and the other one at where Rutter's is on Harland Springs Road on Route 9 West. But there needs to be more, obviously, so.
They said the turn lane, the second turn lane, Hedgesville's coming, they're just waiting for utilities to be moved.
They would start on those in the spring and the turn lane itself would probably be installed sometime this fall is the thought there. Yesterday, I did have the pleasure of being at the Senior Center and the Ambulance Authority, I serve on both boards, so it worked out really well. Donated an AED to the Senior Center. They've never had one there. Obviously, I don't know, that'd probably be my first choice in Berkeley County to place one. And so it's going to be installed this week. The staff's going to go over and train the staff there to use it properly and we think that's a great addition. And we appreciate the fact that the Ambulance Authority, you know, donated that to the Senior Board. And John, being new, we have gone in the past year over all the buildings that Berkeley County Commission owns and we've got AEDs installed in every building now in our buildings. So that was a good thing. That's all I have, sir.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to add one thing. I forgot to, when I had my turn, when I was there, I stayed one day over in Charleston and was able to spend some time with Leadership Berkeley. Leadership Berkeley is a great program that's run through the Berkeley County Chamber. It's been around for a long time, it's very successful, and was able to spend quite a bit of time with those new leaders in our county. And we were able to meet with the governor and, you know, those people asked the governor some real tough questions. I was pretty proud of them. And some of the questions that was given to the governor was about roads and expansion and, you know, how, you know, he planned on to bring the Eastern Panhandle up and the growth that's going on here. So I didn't want to forget our time spent with Leadership Berkeley and that great program that's been going on here in the county for some time.
Commissioner Rumble did say that, you know, obviously they meet with the governor every weekly and that our concerns would be expressed to him as well. And so we just keep our fingers crossed, our arms crossed, legs crossed, toes crossed, whatever, to maybe get some attention here for our road situation. I can cross my eyes as well.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, it's been a rather busy couple of weeks, you know, the last two weeks. We spent a lot of time in Charleston and just trying to make those contacts, working with asset strategies to get us where we need to be. We were able to sit with the Senate President and get his support on some of the bills as well as the Chair of GovOrg, which was really important on the House of Delegates side. That's Delegate Phillips. So just trying to continue to build those relationships. Also, this past week or so, we've also been working with Berkeley County Cares. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank the public for their generous support of this worthwhile project, the material that's been collected that will be sent to Southern West Virginia to assist with the flooding areas that they've had. But, you know, with all the volunteer fire departments, Berkeley County Fire, the Sheriff's Office, Martinsburg City, we've had, Walmart has been very gracious and allowed us to set up down there. So Echo Lab, I know, has donated, we're working right now. I think we'll get a little bit of help from Procter &amp; Campbell and that's what we asked for, told when they didn't need, we didn't need a truckload, we just needed some stuff and I'm sure they'll come through because they always have. But I wanted to particularly thank Randy Lilly and Sean Wolford in particular. They were there all three of those days that we collected. I was not able to be there all three of those days, so it wasn't the most pleasant weather down there, a little windy and a little cool. But just want to thank everybody that was involved there along with the Sheriff's Office that has contributed to that. Gary and I, yesterday, met with the Health Department Construction Crew. They're finishing things up, you know, they're tying up the HVAC, the electric, the drywall is hung. Next week they'll be doing flooring and they got about six more weeks in that addition to the Health Department will be complete. The jail courtroom area is really, really nice. It really took shape over the last two weeks. They were in there yesterday finishing up some IT work. The Supreme Court was in there doing their work and that building really looks nice. So everything's coming to a end there as well. Next on our board and commission vacancies, we have a new application that's been received from Betsy Plummer and Beth Pansion for Farm Land Protection Board. So if we can get those folks scheduled to come in, we appreciate that. Get caught up here for a minute. And next up is our own Will Lawrenson, a fiduciary supervisor. Good morning, Will.
Good morning, Edward.
Morning. Will was part of that Berkeley leadership group, by the way.
He certainly was.
I'm a graduate.
Did you ask some of the tough questions?
I did not. I asked no questions.
Just curious.
Anyway.
But yet your mother did.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah. She's quick with the tough questions.
I've always heard her very questionable. Anyway. First, we have an estate hearing for the estate of James Malcolm Cody. Mr. Cody passed away test date on December 10, 2004, a resident of Berkeley County. On January 22nd, the petitioner Melanie Cody, the deceased surviving spouse, provided an original unattested and unproven will to my office for probate. The will dequests all tangible, personal, and residual probate assets to Mrs. Cody, seemingly meets all formal requirements of a valid last will and testament in the State of West Virginia. However, the will was authored in Maryland, thus does not self-prove. As this body may know, self-proving attestations are rare than wills made in Maryland. The simple fact that Maryland has a register of wills. A person while living can deliver their wills to set register of wills, making the idea of self-proving a document superfluous. You're handing the document to this government official yourself. Of course, here in West Virginia, we do not record a person's will until they pass away, which requires either A, a court of law designating the will as valid on its face, B, self-attest affidavit attached to the will where the witnesses swear before a noted republic to the circumstances of their witnessing the will's execution, C, witness attestations after the fact where the witnesses similarly swear to the circumstances of the will's execution months or years ago, or D, petitioning this body to accept the will in solemn form, acknowledging its legal validity on its face and without objection from any interested parties. Mr. Cody chose the latter in this case. As stated, the will is written, shows testamentary intent, signed by the testator, and has two unattested witnesses. Our code does not require attestation, meaning a noted republic, to be accepted as a valid will. As such, without any objection from any interested party in the public, I ask for this commission's consideration to accept the unproven will of James Malcolm Cody Jr.
Okay, you've heard a request from Will. I need a motion to accept the unproven will in solemn form for the estate of James Malcolm Cody Jr.
Show move. Second?
Probably move in a second. Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you, Will. I know we have another one, right?
We do. Next, we have the settlements for the month of March. We have 21 estates for final settlement. There are no interim settlements this month, the month of March 2025. All estates proposed for settlement here this morning are identical to those found ahead. Additionally, all states proposed for settlement here this morning have been legally or actually noticed of their proposed pending settlement status as prescribed by West Virginia law. Furthermore, my office has received no written notice of objection to date or from any interested parties of the estates named herein. Lastly, all claims of debt publicly filed against each of these estates have either been released as paid in part or in full by the creditors themselves or the estate has been declared to be insolvent, meaning no probate assets remain to pay heirs, beneficiaries, and creditors elect. Without objection from any present interested party in the audience today, I ask for this commission's consideration for the approval of the 21 estates for final settlement in the month of March 2025.
I need a motion to approve the settlement request as Will presented.
Smooth.
Probably move in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Aye, ayes have it. Thanks, sir.
Last thing I promise, we have the estate hearing for the estate of Patricia S. Clohan. Ms. Clohan passed away on October 13th, 2024, test date, a resident of Berkeley County. November 6th, 2024, Christopher Clohan, named executor and petitioner in this matter, also the son of a deputy, here before the fiduciary supervisor's office and presented a legally valid will for probate. My office qualified him without bond per the will's instructions at that time. No subsequent filings have been made for this estate. Instead, both Christopher Clohan and Carissa Clohan, the alternate named executor in the will, have opted to either resign or waive their rights to serve in this estate as personal representative in favor of returning any bill. However, Mr. Clohan has been in legal charge of this estate for four months to date. Indeed, it is unclear what actions, if any, were taken by Mr. Clohan on this estate's behalf. For this reason, I ask this commission's for its consideration in allowing for the resignation of Christopher Clohan and require Mr. Clohan to submit an interim settlement of counts to my office within thirty days.
Very good. Need a motion to accept the request to remove Christopher Clohan as the executor of the estate.
So moved.
Yes, sir.
Second?
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Thank you, Will. Thank you, sir.
All I have, gentlemen. Thank you.
Have a good day. Okay. Next up is Mr. Sean Hogman, candidate for Farming and Protection. Good morning, sir.
Sean.
Hey, Don. It's morning.
Good, how are you?
Good.
By way of introduction, my name is Sean Hogman. I was born and raised here in Berkeley County. I left for ten years to go to WVU for the undergrad and a law degree. And then spent two years working in the federal judiciary. I re-earned honorable Robert B. King. I've now returned to Berkeley County. I now work in the law firm, with Jackison. I still reside here, reside on a small farm. I actually grew up on a small farm in the care that has been eaten by farm land programs. All has been.
I think your roots kind of run a little deep. My memory serves me, your dad served on the original Farming and Protection Board.
That's correct, and believe it or not, I have a little bit of practical experience.
Kind of like a family tradition. Very good. Mr. Boyd, do you have a question for Sean?
Well, it looked like you're very qualified, law degree and all that. Is there any direction you'd like to see that go, that program go, or is it running as you would like it to go?
We're fortunate to have Berkeley County's Farming and Protection Program. It's the bestest, one of the largest, large transportation programs in Berkeley County. Is there any direction, words? Clark, right now, create a test. According to other avenues to fund, they know there's a.
Very good.
Well, first and foremost, Sean, thank you for coming back home. You are exactly the demographic and the type of person that we're looking to keep here in West Virginia. So I know your roots run deep. I know you went to WVU and was educated and decided to come back to the Eastern Pay Handle to continue those roots. And thank you very much for making that decision. That makes me very happy. And I know that you've been involved with this board and you bring good things to the board. So thank you very much for your service and thanks for bringing that law degree back to the Eastern Pay Handle.
Thank you, Mr. Malcolm. I would encourage everyone to consider, certainly off on the fiduciary, third things.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. Mr. Hardy, where do you go?
I know we recently reintroduced ourselves at another meeting. And I want to thank you for applying for this. And if you do 1% of what your dad has done for the county, it's going to be great.
Yeah.
You've gotten to speak with Sean over the last couple of months at the board meetings of the Farming and Protection. And I know what a fine young man he is. We've got another interview today. We've got probably three more this month. So we've got a lot of really good candidates for that board. And I appreciate the fact that you're willing to serve. Thank you.
Don, you're usually one, I'm the last one, so that sometimes these guys take my questions, right? But what changes would you like to see? Other than the funding mechanism that you spoke about with Delegate Clark, what other changes could we make to make it better to encourage more properties to go into the East?
Well, certainly the driving cost or driving issue, farm, agriculture, costs the entire United States, costs a lot, land, equipment, one of the things, or is business. So where I'm going with this, further outreach effort, always, you know, although there is a large county, farming community, doing outreach efforts with that small community, also encouraging other farmers, young farmers, my generation, some industry, kind of forward.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, please give our best to you, Dan. And thank you for coming in and having interest in Ms. Boyd. Thank you very much.
Thank you for supporting Boyd.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll take a break and we'll be back at 10:45 for our next interview.
All right, we're back in session. Next up, we have Board of
Senator Coltrane, Governor West Point. I'm here to connect with Darman and Ford on finding a way home and love what they have to do here. I'm a fourth generation farmer and interested in doing this for us, at least I believe in what's out of the perfect county. As time changes, the dynamic in accounting now comes out of talk, but primarily way to protect that heritage, all in trying to help that. But, very good.
Mr. Boyd.
You say you're a farmer. Is there any direction or any new things you'd like to see out of the program?
Well, as far as the way the program is running, I must say, having had some kind of optics on it, most of it, I follow it to my, follow it to me, I do believe that it actually quite well, on terms of insurance, I have a perception of it, it's fairness, and obviously, the more farming is just better, obviously there's a lot of constraints with that, and any more organizations, person back and why does they do it, probably their reason for it. It's like, right now, just looking at who's on the board, I think it's from good people, I know there's other good people on board. More or less, as we put forward, what I like to do is basically, and why does it do everything?
Do you think that there should be any requirements on keeping an active farm if it goes into protection, or do you think it's just saving the land to sit there?
So, I do believe there should be some kind of value in being an active farm. There are hard point places in the country, not that you might active, but I do believe on the part that they have, for as far as how they create farms or what kind of stuff they're once given, I do believe that's inappropriate.
Those are all great answers, and thank you for being willing to be on the board, and just like the past gentleman, thanks for coming back home. It's always, it's always great to have good people back in our community, and I'm like you, lifelong residents, and love the eastern panhandle and love Berkeley County, so thank you for being willing to serve, and thank you for your service.
There's not really anything I can ask Louis other than I've known him since day one, and his family that he came from, and I think he would be an excellent choice for you.
I never met him until a few months ago, he's been attending our meetings too the past couple, but everything I heard about you, I heard a lot about you before I mentioned, you got a lot to live up to. But, he's a fine, fine young man, and would obviously be a good choice if we're moving in that direction, so thank you for your willingness to serve.
Louis, as, as mentioned earlier, I'm the last one, and most of these guys take my questions, okay? But I don't really have a question for you, but I'm, I'm really pleased to see young people come and apply for these boards, and, you know, you guys are the future, and this board is really important to be able to save a lot of the farmland that we have. I know that a lot of farmers are under pressure from developers, and if these programs like this can keep our acreage, you know, as it used to be, when I was growing up, it would make a great change for the future. So, thank you for what you have done in the past in your military service, and thank you what you're currently doing in your military service, and thanks for applying for this position. Thank you, have a good day.
How many vacancies on this board? How many vacancies are there?
There's two right now. Oh, not yet, but there will be, next, by next month.
Kicking them off.
Yep. So, one guy's, one gentleman, the president is telling me his term expires, you're going to be two full term, and then George Miller's actually moving, moving to Iowa, so.
Yeah, George is a, George is a friend of mine, he's got, his kids live out that way, and we're on big farms out there.
We just reappointed him a couple weeks back, but then he came in last month and said he's moved down.
All right, next up, Bobby Miller, or Senior Service Board. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning.
How you doing?
Good, thank you. I feel like I'm burning the fire.
Oh, no. We're easy to get along with.
You're in a better spot than what we are.
Sometimes. First off, I'm Sometimes. First, I want to apologize as much for being a member.
No worries.
Thank you, Mr. President. How can I provide to you?
We'll just have a few questions we might run down and Mr. Boyd's going to start us off.
Are you familiar with the Senior Center?
Am I familiar with the Senior Center? Yes. And I could tell my age and tell you how many. One of my dad's favorite projects. Grab us to everything younger. And as I got older, I also went to different things with my mother. One of the biggest ones was mother and daughter team. They have a lot of activities out there. They have a lot of artisans that come in, bring to. There's a book club, Bible club, all kinds of different things that the community should. The biggest asset to be on the board, they have a medical team. And I have helped in the past, but because I have other, directed me yesterday. I'm primary caregiver, so I know all about the elderly. I do have a past with the VA center. If you have to see, that's come as a story. Demographic, media. Have helped in the past. They have different services out there. They have blood pressure clinic with a wonderful diabetic management program. So I can bring a lot to the table.
Yeah, thank you for your being here today and your willingness to serve. The Senior Center is something that's near and dear to my heart. I've, I've worked with Amy on a lot of different projects, some state level and, and Lita funds and those type of things. And I love that facility out there. Actually, I was going to try to go out there and have lunch today, but I think we're going to run a little long. I like to go out and go have lunch and maybe go play some bingo or whatever's happening out there today. So I think it's a, I think it's a vibrant, vibrant community and I just appreciate your willingness to be able to be a part of that and support the programs that they are putting in place out there for our seniors. And just thank you for all you, you have done and you want to do.
And it's so important that we don't forget our elderly. Because we got where we are because our children.
Yeah, I often said in my previous job that our seniors were our forgotten generation. They had paved the way for a lot of things that we are reaping the benefits for today. And sometimes they can become our forgotten generation. And so we have to make sure that we're taking care of our seniors on all different levels. But the Senior Center is a, is a wonderful asset to the community and I feel like they have a really good board and they have a good team out there.
It's wonderful. And I've heard so many say that the connections they have there, the camaraderie that they. All that older people that aren't as lucky as a lot of us that have children, that they can go out there and just.
I'm going to eventually try to steal that board away from Steve at some point in time.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, yes, ma'am. We'll go right on down.
There's not a question I can't ask you that I probably don't already know you haven't already told me. So I just want to thank you as like, like everybody else that wants to get back to the community that gave so much to me. So thank you.
And even without her medical background, Bobby would be a perfect choice to be, to be on the board. But that's what she brings that I don't know that anyone else would want to run on our board now. We have a really good board there that has the background she does. And, you know, we're dealing with issues now of getting nurses for the seniors there. And Amy's been working hard on that this past week. It's tough, so. Well, there's smart time too. But it's, so her expertise there is going to lend heavily helping that board along. Great choice.
All right, any suggested changes that you would?
Um, I'd like to get my hands in on it more to, to out there. Problem solved.
Very, very nice.
I didn't tell you, person I am, all of my life, I've, I've been, will tell you that falls. Problems right now.
Very good. Thank you for applying. You know, we're always looking for good community minded people to serve on our boards. And, you know, so many of our boards are, you know, people are so giving of their time and talent. So appreciate your willingness to serve.
Well, just stay right there. We don't normally do this, but I'm going to make a motion now that we appoint Bobby Jean to the senior board. He'll be able to then attend our March meeting, which is the fourth Wednesday of every month and get her on board. They asked me at the meeting last week if we had anybody, I said, we do have a great choice coming in. I'll make that motion.
Second that motion. It's been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, ma'am.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Get in touch with Tracy McCormick and she'll tell you what you need to do to finish up.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Bobby.
Thank you.
Beefy ready to go? Okay. Next up is Chief Deputy Tom Young. Sure. We're doing fine. How you doing? Stand by. It gets better.
That's those old football injuries. Oh, hockey. That's even worse probably.
Morning, everybody. Which would you like to do first?
We're going to start out with Officer Reeve, Rife.
Right. Yes. Pardon me, I completely forgot about that one this morning. He has signed from the.
Animal.
Berkeley County Animal. Going to ask that. Does the vest and carrier surplus property we could donate? Simply because such a small stature, the vest is probably going to sit in our supply room. In a period of time, we'll probably use them some time here. Probably be.
I fully support that. I, you know, I read your, remember, the only, the only thing that I would like to see us add on there and Anthony or Gary can kick in if you don't mind, that Berkeley County has no legal liability with this vest. I mean, I'm, I'm sure right now it is in certification, but if we're going to declare it surplus, then I want to make sure that it's clear that we have no liability with that. All right. So anybody have any other further questions for Tom on this?
Make a motion to declare the vest is surplus.
I'll second that motion.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I was having. Thank you, Tom. And next up is your RFP drone.
Yes, sir. This is a four plus year project and I think we're finally getting. With the cooperation, Gary, Chad. You finally got the grants, cleared away the. Apartment of laptops through the IT department, which Chad's zero and the swapping funds basically led us to this RFP. In doing so, it enabled us to get a lot more bang for a buck money wise. Whereas had we not done the swap, $50,000 grant would have bought us one drone. As now swapping, that is going to enable us to buy four drones. Capable of 3D mapping. 3D mapping, 3D landscaping, anything and everything for crime scenes, accident scene. As well as search and rescue, LIDAR, clear. Five minute flight times now, much more software. Had we had to stick previous, what we were looking at are capable of, are more limited, are less lifetime. Out of this, we're also going to be doing SWAT drone, which is capable of beating suspects of living houses. SWAT would be solely produced SWAT team that's capable of fast, making guys a little bit safer. Contact with perpetrators inside residences and buildings. Out of the two RFPs we put out, the SWAT drone is not a part of that, which I suspected would be a problem as we do that. Ed has already provided to you guys. 3D video, all the capabilities of SWAT drone, as well as documentation, law enforcement. Two RFPs that we sent out, or I'm sorry, the RFP that we sent out, we got two responses back, one being from Adorama, which they responded. And have been very good. And they come in by the name of Unmanned Vehicle Technologies. RFP for, I'm sorry, the return from unmanned vehicle technologies. Request much better in that they responded to all but the sole source SWAT drones portion of the RFP. And we are requesting that we forward with unmanned vehicle technologies coming in at the price of $33,000, $47,000 in 50%. For drone, off drone, five drone, all the companies, software, hardware and accessory. Including several of them with three years, the questions asked, error to returns.
How many pilots do you have?
Five, sir.
You have five. Pretty good. They're all licensed?
Yes.
Very good. I, I was impressed, you know, when I was looking through there that it has a glass breakage attachment to it. Pretty cool.
That SWAT drone impressed me when I first saw it. I'd never seen it. And just if you have a chance, if you did watch the video.
I did not.
Watch that little short video. I've watched it a couple of times. SWAT team, paper.
So how is it, how, and I'm just asking before we, before we take a vote on, how is that deployed? Is it kept at the office? Is it in a supervisor vehicle? You know, how, how's this single? Any of them?
Any of them. If you look through our list of the RFP, of the responses we got in RFPs that sent out, there are several. Are included in several spare batteries, all of the different units, as well as fast, mobile fast charging capability. Which is called the super fast car charging combo. Our goal is to make these, as an example, potentially have a unit that has these things. Way charging, very much like our crime scene unit, our SWAT vehicle. Deploy these anytime anywhere from the office, ready to go, without having to grab bags, grab box as well.
Very good. About having anything else for the chief?
Just a couple of quick questions. So you, you envision these be almost like you have a K-9 officer, you'd have a drone officer. Maybe at some point in time, these would be kept in a car and if you needed to bring a drone officer in? Or is this more specialized where you would have someone who is just a trained pilot in that would be kept at the sheriff's department and brought out for, for that use?
The latter, if there's.
Okay.
Something very much like our crime scene unit, they have the office for these, our investigators. They need it, they come in, they get it and they can go. Very much the same, five different operators. Whoever might be working shift that day, if it's a crime scene or an accident, off the map, whatever the case may be.
Right.
They can grab that vehicle.
Right. And what's the operational time of the vehicle?
Of the drones?
Yeah, what's the operational time of?
They're varying. The, the large one that we're looking at, which is the 30T, is 55 minutes lifetime. I've actually personally flown this one last, back in September. Which is what led me to another direction we were looking for, lifetime.
Gotcha. I'm going to ask a question just because I know it's going to be asked of me. We're not purchasing these for like long-term surveillance or these are not drones that we're going to put up for, you know, for two, three days for long-term surveillance or of properties or that type of stuff. These are for short-term investigative purchase or proj, or projects or short-term investigation stuff that, you know, when incidents happen, it's not, this is not something that's going to be used in a long-term surveillance.
I have not even.
I just wanted to ask that question because I know it will be, it will be asked of me. So thank you.
I would think also, chief, that there would be a possibility of your, like your, your accident reconstruction folks being able to put one in the air and, and get a good overall view of.
Everything. That is, that is part of the, if you look at the list, the DJI Mavic 3E, two of those on here. One of those is scripted, accident reconstruction. It also goes into the I-Tara and the MFI. It's all worked for, I think, IDR, GPS.
The, the technology is wonderful and you have, you have to embrace it. I remember in my previous job, we used one on a train accident that was out in the middle of nowhere, quite honestly. But Ranson at that time had the drone and was able to get one up and, and get a look before we actually get people there on the scene. We've used our county drone with Archie. So the, the technology is there and it just makes us all a little better. Okay, Gus.
If you get a second, check out that, that, that break video. It's impressive.
Say that again, was the video?
Break, B-R-I-N-C, Lemur, L-E-M-U, R. Go to their website. They have a little video that they. But, edited solo.
If my answer, you guys have, you have policy, use policy written and validated by legal before you get these in play?
Been written for quite some time. Haven't been processed yet. Thank you, sir.
Very good. Need a motion to approve the bid recommendation for the drone. Second? Properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I was having. There you go, sir.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the Honorable Sheriff, Rob Blair.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, sir.
This is in relation to a couple of weeks ago, pressure of tax office in some position, and this is related to formerly called the Chief Tax Deputy position, now is Tax Office Director, bringing the opening for this position. Currently, now in our budget, we have $57,704 for this, at the rate that question that hire of a $5,000 salary for this position, all the tax office operations, tax collecting. For this, to hire this salary, costing additional $1,000.
Sheriff, what level of training are you looking for in that particular position?
We have a health and badge, have a Tax Office Director, dog description now. I guess that's like material.
Well, I guess where my question is leading is, you want to hire somebody that, hopefully hire somebody that already has that skill set, that knowledge, that educational background for that job. It's not an on-the-job training position.
We would like to find someone with education, financial background. One of my desires is find someone manager, manage an office. We're looking, just like law enforcement, like this county's bread, we're going to end up right at office too. Very important position, manage, as a county councilman. I think managing offices.
Can we financially support their request?
Well, for this fiscal year, clearly, it would just be a fraction of the cost because there want to be probably three months in it. So you know well, at noon, you're going to talk about how tight the budget is for next year, so you have to find $64,000 in next year's numbers. Well, it's a yes, sir. We'll make it. Very good. Thank you.
Anybody have any further questions for the sheriff?
I have questions. So right now, currently, the Tax Office Director position currently is paid at $57,704.
That's the funds we have now. Previously, I don't have the number right now.
Okay. So the position that you're looking to fill that currently, the current budget for that salary is $84,000?
I'm looking to fill at $95,000. And just to back up, we did away with the salaries amount.
Right.
What we have left for this position, thousands, thousands, $704, for the higher benefits, everything.
In this year's budget?
It would only be a fraction this year.
Right. But next year?
Next year would be the total.
Right. And that salary is not in your proposed budget that we already received and already reviewed? This additional $64,000 is not in the 26, the 25, 26 budget that we've already reviewed? Or the number I'm trying to get at is, what were we paying this position, the former position, formerly as the Tax Chief, Tax Deputy? What did that position pay?
It was right at $84,000.
Okay, that's, so it was about $84,000. So you're looking to move that salary from $84,000 to $95,000?
That would be corrected, the exact number, $94,000.
Okay. And you want to go up to $95,000, so about a $14,000 raise for the position, for the new position?
Yes, and that's based upon the restructuring that we did. All five persons. I have the number.
Would it be a fair question to say that you're going from $84,900 to $95,000, but you're looking for someone who meets a different set of qualifications? A much, a much higher, a much higher standard of qualifications than the previous person who filled the position?
That would be correct.
Okay. And you also anticipate the duties of this new hire would grow as the county continues to grow, as the tax office grows?
Absolutely. And I don't have time to get through everything we've done at the tax office.
Sure.
We have done a lot of, I say we, I feel, we have done a lot of ability, process, policy pursuit. It's going to be a lot of responsibilities for us.
And I don't question your motive. I understand the motive behind it. I just want to understand the numbers. So I understand that you're trying to hire someone for a upgraded position who's going to carry more responsibilities than the last person, and also looking at this, responsibilities of this office will grow, and the size of the office will grow as the county continues to grow.
That would be correct.
Sure. I just want to be able to justify that additional $14,000 that we're adding to that position. Yes, sir.
I do have one question. Below that, it does say to hire up to $110,000. Is that the same position if they come in highly, higher qualified?
That was, that was something I had in my notes, and we get discussed, but I feel comfortable with my position. I was looking at, obviously, guess the one that pops it out of heart and salaries, I think, not.
We've never had someone in that position, really, with a financial background, in my understanding, over the years. And I don't know what is more important, than having a financial background for that position. So I think it's a really important move for our county to move forward with this and have that kind of person in that position to fill that role.
Something that still discovered, that we kind of looked through, we need a Tax Office Director, there's no way. Right. Dog description, salaries, that's what we think.
Gentlemen, I'm ready for a motion.
I would make that motion, that we move forward with this request.
And that's for the Tax Office Director.
Yes.
I second that.
I'll be moved in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, sir. Thanks, sir.
You're welcome. I appreciate you.
Thank you. We appreciate you, sir, and your office and everything you do.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Chad Weinberger, Deputy County Administrator.
If we move on to shaking, clarify, if we make the Bobby Miller, is she going to be filling their term?
Vacancy. She's going to be replacing Richard Dennis that he's there from him.
Morning, Chair.
So before you today, is a proposal to amend the way that you leave accrual. This has come to light as your emergency services, at the model. The county commission has very long time, had a policy that leave accrual. That policy was always worked into length of a scheduled day. I work an eight-hour day, 12-hour day, our leaves are awarded. Does not take into any hours. And this was a policy that was kind of fit and continued to work as the county did. Hours leave was distributed for our emergency services, especially as we're the largest fire department. This now becomes a significant issue, must address to look correctly. Those are the ones, is rather than leave accrual being paid, this leave accrual policy moves a modifier. So if you think a regular employee works 40 hours per week, that could be 4/10s, it could be 5/8s, it could be any combination, but if an employee's work a regularly scheduled 40-hour-per-week schedule, that's your base. That's your, that's your one full-time equivalency. Employees who work above that 40-hour schedule, or employees that work below that 40-hour schedule, would have a modifier applied to their FTE, which would award them additional PTO every month, based on how much they work. A great example would be if you have 12-hour employees right now who average 42 hours per week. That 42 hours per week means that they work 5% more than any other employee in the county. You would place a 5% modifier on their leave to ensure that they are earning additional leave in proportion to the amount that they're working, rather than awarding them a 12-hour-a-day modifier, which gives them a disproportionate, about a 50% greater increase to leave. This would be paid equally across all three of your benefits, your vacation leave, your personal leave, and your long-term leave. This modifier, if approved, would affect the leave caps as well. So currently, for eight-hour, 40, for eight-hour-day, 40-hour-per-week staff, you have a 240-hour-a-year cap on vacation leave, as well as personal leave. Those modifiers would be applied to those caps as well. So if they earn 5% more leave, then their cap would be 5% more, doesn't that make sense? Make sure I'm hitting. Nothing is changing. You have about 80% of your employees in the county are working a standard 40-hour-a-week schedule. This is a change that is going to affect about 20% of employees. It is worth noting, this change does not have any impact on the sheriff's civil service employees, as their code is dictated, or their, their time is dictated by state code. So this would be all employees, this would affect all employees who work schedules other than 40 hours per week, except civil service deputies. To get this to go, the second memo, if approved, the next hurdle we would have is, how do we get folks reset to where they need to be, so that we can successfully deploy this policy? When we looked at the numbers, you have quite a few folks that upon day one of a new policy would be significantly over the new cap amounts. So significantly over the cap amounts that it is unreasonable to expect that they would be able to utilize that leave. In fact, it would be incredibly expensive for the county to have them do that, as these are folks that when they take leave, almost always their absence must be covered by overtime, based on current staffing models. So what you would pay out, if we pay them out in their leave for their overages, you're paying a straight hour. If we ask them to use that, you would end up paying a straight hour for their leave, plus another time and a half hour for the person coming in to cover it. See how that cost could run away quickly. If approved, we would set the new leave caps on April 1, and it would cost us about $3,300 in emergency communications to pay down the cap. It would cost about $73,750 in the fire department to pay down the cap. But that would get everybody across the board where they need to be. It would ensure that all hours they have accrued under the former policy are given to them. We're not taking anything from them. Nothing is being, we're not re-converting time, we're not, we're not doing anything like that. They've earned these hours under that policy. That's the fair way to do it. There's some budget impact for that. It's a one-time expense, though. Long-term, this vacation policy is budget positive. It's going to create less user-lose leave, as your, your leave banks being given on a more proportional basis are not going to inflate as quickly, especially again, in the fire department. So that's going to drive down overtime. It's, it's going to, right now, there's a large amount of leave, so we're incenting people to absent themselves from work, which we obviously want to provide them with paid leave, but there's a reasonable cap issue. So this is a budget positive move for the commission, and this does create and bring back equity across all employees. Everybody's hour is equal.
Yeah. And Chad, when that discussion first started, you know, my concern was to make sure that everybody who worked above the 40-hour work week, that their accrual rate was in proportion to what they worked. And you've obviously met that with your presentation. And like I just heard you say, long-term, it's going to save us money, because when guys have to take off user-lose, they have to be backfilled at a time and a half rate. So even though it's a little bit painful to get everybody reset, I do think it's a good move, and I appreciate that we have a policy now for those guys that work, or gals that work 10-hour shifts, 12-hour shifts, 24-hour shift, it's all proportionate accrual rates.
And it should be worth noting, this policy is very flexible. It's a, it's a policy with the future in mind, knowing that non-traditional schedules will probably continue to be needed, and the commission can be very flexible in how they award that time, based on just adjusting the modifier for hours. So it's sort of future proof.
I think it's fair, but I was, I was curious to think what Jen had to say. Is she on board with it? And how about the fire chief?
We had, we've had, since it does primarily affect communications and the fire department, obviously, I met with both the leaders from those organizations, the impact on them, and particularly the fire department, from not having to absorb so much user-lose leave is one of the, I can tell you, the fire chief feels like a thousand-pound weights being on his shoulders. We met with the, I'm, myself and the fire chief sat down and met with the lieutenants, so his three field leaders. Conversation went very, very well. I'm doing the same next week with Jen, with all of her shift supervisors. Have an opportunity to ask questions. But this impact, the reason I really, it was needed to get in front of the fire department as fast as possible, is, I mean, you see the difference in the numbers for the buy-down, it's hugely impactful to them, that weren't creating false panic. They understood that.
Very good. Any further questions?
I just have just a couple. So first of all, I think this is very good policy. This is a moving forward policy, because we understand that our emergency services are going to grow over the years, and this is something that could really get away from us. So kudos to whoever brought this policy forward, because this could really cost the taxpayers a lot of money. Just a couple, just a quick question. If you have an employee that works a 14-hour day, and they take a day off, do they burn 14 hours of their leave time, or do they?
They do. They burn every hour they're typically, they're normally scheduled.
Okay, so whatever they earn, they burn. So if they're 24-hour, they burn 24. Okay. And then, just to be clear, to clarify, for the payout, if we did not come back and compensate these employees at a one-time cost, and we kicked this can down the road, and we capped them, and they're, obviously, they're above that cap, we're going to be paying like two and a half times. Because we're going to pay the leave, right, and then we're going to pay for the overtime to cover that. So it's, it's a much better policy, and a much friendlier taxpayer policy, to hit, take this one-time hit, to, to pay the employees that have garnered this benefit, than to kick the can down the road and let them use that time.
That is correct. Two and a half times minimum.
Right.
Because that assumes that you don't have very senior employees that come in and take that overtime, which then would increase that cost.
Sure. Yeah. Well, I do agree. I appreciate that our agencies are on board with this. I'm sure they weren't happy, but at least they understood that, you know, with our county fire growing, our 911 service will grow as our county continues to grow. This policy that's in place now could have pretty easily gotten away from us, so I applaud that. I think this is a good policy. I think this is a fair policy.
Yeah, and that's really all we can ask for, right at the end of the day, is that we treat everybody fairly across the board.
Yeah.
And that, this does that.
Yeah. Sure. Okay, well, thank you very much for your work in this, and everyone's.
Okay. Need a motion to approve the leave policy.
I would make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
I'll be moved. Second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Take it, Chad.
Mr. President, if you could, a motion to also make the payout to the employees.
That's a, the vacation leave.
That's budget in policy.
Separate motions, at least.
I so move that we make the payout to the emergency communications for $3,300 and to the emergency management of the fire department for $73,750, as presented.
I need a second.
I'll second that.
Proper move. And second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll just have it. Chad, next up is the hiring incentive for telecommunicators.
Yes, sir, and I'd like Director Swisher to join me, which he already remembered. So without reading this memo verbatim to you, coming from a background of emergency services and Commissioner Gokenhour, I know you know as well, hiring for the jobs that these folks do has become increasingly difficult. The sheriff has told you for years that they continue to struggle to hire. We've seen struggles in the fire department. We see struggles in EMS, and 911 has not been immune to that. And in a lot of ways, they're beginning to feel that strain even worse. Nationwide, I've been, Jen has invited me to some online training courses and seminars where nationwide you have 911 leaders that are calling this a national staffing crisis. The only thing that we can do locally to try to weather the storm is to adapt the way that we do things. And one of the very first things that we can try to do as we're looking to fill vacancies is try to recruit trained and certified personnel. I can tell you from my previous background in EMS, one of the hardest things in the world to do was to recruit a trained certified person. There's a lot of reasons these folks are not available in the job market, and a huge part of it is pay and incentive to leave, even if the job that they're at may be one that they're not incredibly happy with. So when we're looking at how we recruit those folks, we wanted to figure out how to move forward with that, and the sheriff kind of set a path for us. In 2023, they presented a program to you for a hiring incentive for certified deputies. And we are asking today to mirror that hiring incentive for certified and trained telecommunicators. We're not looking to change any of the language. We're not looking to change any of the dollar amounts. We're not looking to change any of the structure of the deal. And that language and structure was a three-year commitment to work for you. It was a, half of the incentive was paid within 30 days of start, and the other half of the incentive is paid on their first regularly-scheduled payroll after one full year of service. This contract also includes a repayment schedule, a repayment if they leave within one year, less than two years, and less than three years as a repayment schedule, but they would owe back to the county. They do not honor this. Alongside of that, I tasked Director Swisher to really come up with a strict set of stipulations to vet these folks, to make sure that in the event that we utilize this program, and we don't expect to utilize this program a lot, this is, we're looking for very specific people when we look at a program like this. We're looking, we're looking to pull an all-star from somebody else's roster. LeBron James is a free agent. We want to sign him. That's the kind of thing we're doing. We're not looking for a backup quarterback. Two different sports.
I get the message, Chad.
So I'd like, I didn't want to speak for Jen. I wanted, I know one of the, I know typically one of the hesitations to programs like this are, that's a lot of investment. What are we getting back? So I'd like to let Jen share with you what type of employee is being recruited through this policy.
Morning, Jen.
Morning, Jen.
So one of the first things that we want is, we want somebody that has two years of experience, not two years in training. We want them to be two years as a call taker, a dispatcher, and that's in fire, law enforcement, and EMS, so they will have that background already. And that will be, that will be an easier person for us to train and quicker to train. We just started an academy this week, and those people at a minimum will take between a year to 18 months to get cleared. These people should be in the three-to-six-month range is what they should be, or less, depending upon who we get. They must come with the certifications that we already have for our protocols, and that is the emergency medical, police, fire, and law enforcement dispatch. So if they do not come with that, for them to take those classes, that is about $1,500 in savings for us if they already come with that certification. They also will be like, Deputy Director, I don't know Chad, but like you mentioned, we are going to do a lot more research on these people, so they're going to have extensive interviews. They're going to have an entry-level interview, and then they will have a secondary interview that will be with myself and possibly Chad or someone else in your office. And then we will also go on-site to their centers as long as they sign a waiver to actually go through their personnel files to ensure that we are getting somebody that is qualified and that's somebody that is an employee that we want to bring into our center and clue with our team.
I have a question for Gary, probably. In the history of us doing this with the sheriff's department, have we had cases where some have got the bonus and then left? And has that been an issue in terms of recouping?
Number one, we've not used it very many times, but the contract worked and you did recoup the funds.
We have so far, so that's not an issue.
Again, you probably haven't leveraged that two or three times over there, but it works great. It really does. And Chad alluded to it, and I'll say it, this is in the toolbox for the department to ask of your administrative staff to say, "That makes sense." And ultimately, that decision comes here as a hiring recommendation. So don't think you're unleashing the beast and I'll just giving it to everybody. This is going to be a granular process, and ultimately, the commission will get to make that decision prior to the hiring. So it's still in your control and your purview.
I have a question. Have you guys identified a drafting pool yet? I mean, is this something that you are looking at surrounding counties or using like LinkedIn? Are you using like a head-hunting firm? I mean, is this just so new that you're just getting started in the process? But have you identified a drafting pool?
Well, the easiest drafting pool is going to be surrounding counties in West Virginia because as you all know, the legislature just recently brought all 911 telecommunicators onto the MSRS retirement system, which is 20 years. So our thought is, is that if you're somewhere within a reasonable travel distance and you're looking for a change, this would be a fantastic thing to take advantage of.
Yeah, if you're a certified 911 caller, meet whatever the criteria is, and you're living in another county, you know, you have that 20-year retirement, which is, first of all, was needed, and second of all, was really big for the organization to be able to have that, so.
Even if you have five or six years on the job in Maryland or Virginia, you still come here and decrease your retirement time, unless you bring a boatload of experience.
Yeah. In my mind, this would be more beneficial to 911 than it has been for the sheriff's office. You know, I.
These are.
Other than driving to work, you're not out there risking your life every day in this position like a deputy is, you know. And there's a lot of things, other than things involved in recruiting deputy, good deputies, but in this case.
Well, I'll tell you, Commissioner Catliff, the recruitment, we have found, Jen has been extremely fortunate in getting applications. The last recruitment pool had 225 applications. Her team narrowed that down. They interviewed, 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 interviewed. But as they started to trim that applicant pool down through their pre-testing qualifications, their background check requirements, drug testing, any of their very strict requirements that they have, we were hoping to hire 15. There was an initial plan that Gary and I talked about, we were going to come here and ask you all to overstaff and absorb that through attrition. She started accounting with nine. So even though she gets a lot of applicants, their requirements are very strict, and the aptitude of the candidate has to be very high. So they're not really easy positions to hire.
I just see it as another opportunity, you know, along with the retirement benefit that was approved by the legislature, is as another tool to be able to get you the staffing you need. So anybody prepared to make a motion on this?
Mr. President, I move that we accept this recommendation for the Burpee County Emergency Communications Recruitment Program.
Second. Then proper move. And second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll just have it. Thank you.
Okay, next up, Gary. Motion on the Health Department Furniture.
Mr. President, it's important to note that we spent a lot of money today we weren't prepared for, but now we're going to spend Bill Kearns' money.
Makes it a little happier.
We have enough money to cover this one.
Right, so as you well know, you have a $2 million construction project going on at the Health Department for expansion. In those bi-weekly construction meetings, Bill Kearns, who is now since retired, but as the director then said, "Hey, we need to buy a bunch of furniture," do you have an ability to help? And I said, "As a matter of fact, we have a furniture procurement expert. Her name is Tracy McCormick." So Bill and Tracy got together, wrote a bid spec. You published it for them. You've received 10 responses of that. The lowest response was from Capital Business Systems. They did meet all specifications. Their bid was $31,751.67. While you published a bid and you're going to accept the bid, the Health Department will pay the bill. So if the commission agrees and the Health Department does have the funds, if you would so choose, award it to the lowest responsible bidder, Capital Business Systems.
I move.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll just have it. Okay, that's going to take care of our morning session until 12 o'clock. We're going to take a break until 12. We're going to take a break until 12. I've gone.
We're definitely all gone.
Okay. We're back in session for the afternoon, and we have our elected officials and our department heads to receive their budget allocations for fiscal year '25, '26. A little nosey, sir. First of all, every one of you, we appreciate you, and we consider you great partners in doing the governance of the county. Everybody, every department we have, they're very critical, important to the public that we serve. So that's what I want to start off with, is a very simple thank you. And I've asked Gary to go over the revenues. He was giving me all kinds of information this morning. I'm writing notes. I'm like, you know what? He knows it off the top of his head. He doesn't need to write it down. So I'm going to ask Gary to get us started with revenues. And even before he speaks, the amount of time, expertise, and energy that Gary has put into this budget is tremendous. And this year, it's his budget. He didn't, he's not working off of a shared budget. So when I walk in and he's rubbing his head, this year, it's his budget. So I don't feel quite so bad.
You see what happened?
But I wanted to say something that I'm really proud of, and Gary did it, is in years past, every government agency that I've ever worked with, they always said, we have to wait until July to see what kind of pay raises we can give. Because we've tried to make our employees a priority. And Gary says, let's budget pay raises into our budget. So that way, at the end of the year, the budget's all. It's all good. We don't have to wait and see and sometimes say, there's no money for a budget, you know, for pay raises. So building those pay raises into the budget as we move through this made life a whole lot easier. And thankfully to Gary and the rest of the commission, you know, we were able to make our employees a priority. And we haven't had raises now for a couple of years, and we felt that we needed to be able to do that. So Gary, if you would please, and thank you, if you would please, go over the revenues, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think first and foremost, everyone needs to understand that we're going to set expectations with revenue projections, but everyone should know that the county commission, when they received all of these, the total ask for this year's fiscal budget was $56,963,947. With that being said, they have forecasted revenue to be $53,750,978. So if they could have, and you heard the president say, I think they would have funded every one to every penny they wanted. So some of you were easy on the request, some were heavy. Some said, hey, can I have a minute of your time? We sat down and discussed what were wants and what were needs. So I believe personally, and the president walked through the expense side, but we're going to back you into $53,750,978, which is roughly about 4% of greater revenue available than there was last year. And to that point, I'll walk you through the big ones. The first and foremost, the first number that we always deal with in West Virginia special, is we look at the cash left over from the last fiscal year as a revenue item for next year's fiscal year. It's a wonderful thing. But we project $2,585,073 as the unaccommer fund balance, or the unassigned fund balance for the next fiscal year. The property tax revenue that will be generated is estimated at $29,288,917. That's roughly 4% greater than last year. Some other big numbers in there, the property transfer tax, the county commission budgeted 3.5, excuse me, 4 million last year. They raised it to 5 million this year. Federal grants, they expect to see $2,278,337. State grants, $1,428,641. They, the franchise, the cable franchise fee, they've reduced because the trending on cable franchise is down, so they reduced it down to $800,000. All of the others, minus refunds and reimbursements, they have it budgeted at $3,250,000. The rest are all small numbers as they add up. So, Mr. President, as you have it now, to include a contribution, or I guess moving $350,000 worth of these expenses over onto the coal severance budget, all in, you're going to spend about $53,750,978.
Thank you. And if you hear people talking about, well, that's how they make the sausage and stuff, well, it's been that way for months. Been working with the budget, trying to get the numbers, trying to get what everybody needs, and just trying to figure it out. So we'll start out, right at the top at 401. The county commission had requested $2,019,976. That's what they were, that was a consensus of their approval. The county clerk, $1,132,138. That's what he will receive, $1,132,138. The circuit clerk, if I remember correctly, her request was flat, and we appreciate that. And we also know that as we continue to grow our courts, that you will have to be looked at with your staffing. We understand that. You drop some people to reorganize your agency, but as we continue to get judges and magistrates, that stress will also be on your department. So $1,307,704, and that's what you were granted. The sheriff's tax office.
Didn't help you?
No.
I was trying.
Thank you. $861,451, and that's what was approved, $861,451. Prosecution attorney's office, I think you were also flat request. Prosecutor Kendrick, yes, sir, there you are. And same as our conversation with the clerk, you know, this county continues to grow, and we realize and we strive almost daily, the conversation is about staffing for one agency or the other. But we appreciate your cooperation until you figure out exactly where you need to be moving forward. Your request was $3,61,134, and that's what you received, $3,61,134. The assessor, $1,49,844 was your request. $1,040,000, $1,49,844 is what you'll be receiving. Larry, so there we go. Statewide computer network, that's $403,500. That's what was awarded. Sheriff's tax processing, $212,000, $212,000. fiduciary, Will, your request was for $301,532. You were presented with your new budget, $301,532. County clerk elections, $816,114 was the request. $816,114 was what you've been budgeted, sir. Magistrate court, that's $75,000, that's statewide. Circuit court security, $1,872,407. Budget is $1,867,407. Custodial, 389,603, and it was awarded 389,603. Civil service requested $38,700. $22,200 was granted. The courthouse account, and that's where mostly the gasoline, a lot of all of your utilities and that's kind of stuff come through, is $3,756,000, and that's what we budgeted, was that amount. Facilities, which is under the county commission, $710,054. $710,054 was their allotment. IT, $2,966,495, and that's what they were granted, $2,966,495. Building inspections, Brian, $861,644, and that's what you were granted, $861,644. Planning, $338,137. You were budgeted $338,137. Engineering, $571,334. You were budgeted $571,334. Law enforcement. Law enforcement, you requested $8,545,804, you were, I'm sorry, $8,545,804, you were granted $8,545, I'm sorry, $8,545,804. We had, just to hold up there for a second, we had a discussion with the sheriff, some of the special things that he requested, basically for recruitment and retention. His last two civil service tests that he's given, he's had approximately 12 to 14 people show up. Once they start to process and weed them out, do the background, do the physicals, they ended up with two or three eligibility. So, he requested a $5,000 starting incentive plus $5,000 for his deputies to recruit and retain his deputies. That was granted and also the vest request was granted. On the service of process, it was $729,579, $729,579 was granted.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
That does include their Alexis Worley's position?
Yes, social worker.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, that's, that's a social worker that you had requested there in that line The home confinement, Tim Zaya, $930,368 was requested, $938,368 was, was placed in that new budget. Reserves, $5,000 was requested, $5,000 was put in there. Emergency services, which also includes Brookly County Fire, was $3,552,903. The amount budgeted was $3,552,903. 911 communications, $500,000 was requested, that's what was placed in this year's budget. Animal control, also with animal control, we did agree as the sheriff and his team requested to get the animal control officers in steps, like, like our, like our law enforcement has, like our court marshals have, our 911 center. And so, we've, we've also included our animal control to be eligible for steps. That request was, was for $550,956 and that's what was placed in this year's budget, $550,596. And basically, everything else there came, will come, yeah, will come under our, our county commission budget. So, at the, at the end of the day, with truly the employees being made a priority, $5,000 pay increase and beginning salary increase for the sheriff's office, every other agency will receive a 5% pay increase with a $4,000 cap. So, if, if you're at a certain level and this 5% takes you above 4,000, that's where you will stop. So, we try to be as fair to everybody as what we could possibly be and taking into considerations of everybody's need and their challenges. You know, none of us have enough people in our departments to really and truly do everything that we need to do safely and efficiently. But also, we don't have those dollars to be able to do that. But I, but I'm pleased, I want to thank Gary and Chad in particular, and the, and the rest of the commission for their due diligence in preparing this year's budget and, and getting pay raises out to our employees who, who deserve those pay raises. And we're, we're thankful that we're able to do it. If we, if we didn't do that, maybe we could get the additional deputies that we needed or we could get the different, the additional people in the clerk's office that we need. But priorities had to be made to our employees. So, that's, that's the, basically the beginning and the ending of, of our budget presentation. So, I hope everybody can live within it and thank you for what you do.
Mr. President, if I may, just for purposes of the internet and the folks listening, all of this happened and the county commission kept the levy rate where it exists today. So, with regard to raising taxes on the public or dipping into anyone's pockets, all of the effort you saw and everything that you heard today was based on leaving the levy rate where it is and has been. And that's without calculated by the rollback. The commission did that on their own. So, if, if they were to look at keeping the, the revenue growth where it is and has been years prior, they would have needed to increase the levy rate by about 4% and they chose not to do that. That's a big deal.
Yes, you know, you, you know, we've received requests from different department heads and the electeds, but you can't ever, ever forget about the taxpayers. So, you just try to find that balance and it's, it's, it's tough. I can tell you, it's tough. And, you know, I think about, a lot of times I think about the, the poor widow that's now down to one single income and maybe it's only social security. And, you know, do we go back to them and, and ask them for, to raise a fee or tax? And it's, it's hard, it's hard to do. And just to be able to try and find that balance. And please know that, you know, we care about you, we care about your people and we care about the public. And, and that's, you know, those conversations have been had on this bench about trying to protect the, the public at the same time, you know, as our fees occasionally will have to raise them. The ambulance fee, you know, has to be raised occasionally. The fire fee, you know, will have to be increased and stuff. So, it's, it's not easy. I said do it that way and I'm going to leave it at that. But we did the best we could and appreciate everything you all do and have a good day.
Can I say something first? I'd like to say something first. We've been working hard for the last three years on trying to get the legislators to help us with some home rule and the ability to impose 1% sales tax. And we are committing every penny of that if we ever get the opportunity to public safety. Most of you in this room will benefit from that. 911, fire, law enforcement, prosecuting attorney's office, all of you will benefit from it. Right now is the time, they're in session. If you would get people to call our delegates and our senators and express to them, they hear from the public, it'll have a lot more meaning than us being down there beating on the door because they know what we want to say. If you could get people to do that, it could have a tremendous impact on our potential to maybe get this thing passed. And I know that politician right there can explain it being in there. What the public though, when they say something, you listen more so than if commissioners come in and talk to you. And if you would, if you really want to see this community grow and protect our people, we, we need to find, the last thing we want to do is raise the property taxes of our residents. It may come to that, but we, this would be an alternate, alternate to that, that would prevent that from happening. And it could be a major win for this whole county, for all of you. So, next year, we sit here and we have a budget and we don't have to sit here and struggle and stress over how much we can give you, it would be taken care of. So, I, I just beg you to do that.
Heard him. Thank you. Have a good day.
We have to recess. Items from the public, I don't know you did items from the public.
Are there any items from the public? As the record shows, nobody come forth. Need a motion to recess?
Mr. President, I move that we recess.
We are in recess.